Ladies and gentlemen, members of City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the 6th floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, November 13, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds? Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Godfrey?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. The first item on your work session this evening is the results of the Citizen Satisfaction Survey. And let me invite LaVores Pace to introduce our consultants on this project. While they're coming forward, I just remind you that we've conducted a two-pronged approach this fall to citizen engagement in helping us improve and focus priority services as we head into the next biennium. One of the prongs was the Core Services Initiative. This is the other prong, which is the measurement of citizen satisfaction. And so they're here tonight to present the results of their study.
Thanks, Brandon. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. We come this evening to bring you information relative to the 2012 Citizen Satisfaction Survey. In a previous public work session, I think then-City Manager Ken Chandler informed you that we would come back to bring the findings of that survey, and of course, tonight, we are here to do just that. From the company of issues and answers, we have Chief Operating Officer Ms. Carla Lindeman and Senior Account Executive Rob Phelps, who will walk you through this presentation and provide information for you this evening.
Well, thanks, LaVores, and Brandon, for having us here today. And thank you to the City Council and the mayor for taking time out of your busy schedule to have us come in and present a few other results from the 2012 Citizen Satisfaction Study. Before we get to the presentation, just want to review a few things that has transpired over the last couple of months that brought us here today. Through the competitive bid process, RFP, that we submitted, we were awarded the project for the 2012 Citizen Satisfaction Study. We've also conducted the study in the past, so we've had some experience with running the study. And we set up a preliminary meeting with LaVores and the City Manager at that time to discuss the goals and objectives for this year, which were pretty much the same as they have been in the previous years. Once we implemented those changes for this year, we started our calling in late September, I think around the 20th of September through mid-October, so a little over three weeks of calling. We made a little over 20,000 attempts to reach 400 surveys, and the average length of the survey came in around 13 minutes, with some exceeding that time and some a little shorter. So with that in mind, we do have a short presentation that we have here today. After the presentation, we do have a couple handouts that we would like to provide to the City Council, one of which is a full questionnaire that has every survey question that was administered this year, and we have posted the results and percentages to those questions on that survey. And I think it's a good tool to quickly see overall how the citizens of Portsmouth have responded to the various questions that we asked them. The second handout is a more detailed full report that gets into a little more specific data analysis, looking at maybe the different age groups that were interviewed, the gender, the length of time of residency in Portsmouth. So that's a little bit more detailed report, but I think both will be very insightful for you to use.
Okay. Give it a light, please.
So just to, some of this may be a summary of what I just mentioned, the background and objectives. During the period of 1997 to 2007, the City of Portsmouth has conducted a citizen survey to measure the resident satisfaction with a range of city services. In October 2012, as I mentioned, Issues and Answers was giving the project with the goal of obtaining citizen feedback on services, including but not limited to police and fire protection services, parking, traffic and road conditions, public school system, government employment and efforts to attract more business and tourism, and various government processes such as tax collection and permit obtainment, to name a few. Also, as in previous years, the city wanted to gauge the usage and satisfaction with the city's website, as well as the interactions with city employees, whether that be through telephone or in person, and to gain a better understanding of the residents' perceptions of the quality of life in Portsmouth. And as mentioned, we conducted about 400, we conducted 400 surveys using a random sample basis. The best things about living in Portsmouth, we've listed the top mentions here. This is what we call an open-ended question, where we ask the question and wait for a response from the respondent. If it's something that's in a pre-listed code that we have learned from previous years, then we coded immediately into that. Otherwise, we record the respondent's actual answer and then code it after the fact. So here are some of the top mentions. 28% of the respondents said that location convenience to the job. A good thing about living in Portsmouth, 16% small-town atmosphere, it's not crowded. 14% the people, the residents, they're friendly. And 13% said it's my home, I've lived here all my life.
11% who said that honestly, they didn't like Portsmouth, but we'll have that in every crowd.
Satisfaction with the quality of life. We asked overall satisfaction with the quality of life in Portsmouth, which was just an overall statement. We had 84% said they were satisfied. And we also, I asked overall satisfaction with the neighborhood quality of life, which came in at 87%. Neighborhood safety, 88% said they felt safe in their neighborhood, 11% unsafe, and a small percentage that don't know. Overall satisfaction with city services, overall satisfaction with city services came in at 80% satisfied. And overall satisfaction with employees, which I had mentioned previously, either by phone or in person, at 79% there.
Can you tell me your sample size again?
400.
400, okay, go ahead.
And that's been the case in all the previous studies as well.
First of all, I just want to say that when I've been looking at these results, and we've been foring over them, I think you should be pleased with how the residents feel about services provided to them. These marks are very, very high, so you know, pat yourself on the back, we don't always get the chance to do that. So starting with, these are in rank order, the services, the Elizabeth Ferry, 99% are satisfied. And then we've listed the percent who've actually used that service. And you're also going to see throughout the next couple slides with the rest of the services, that not all the services are used in the same percentage. I mean, that makes sense. But what I think is interesting and a good takeaway is that even if a service isn't used regularly, often you're going to see the satisfaction is still very high. So that's just a room for more awareness to other residents, to get other people using that service that they're satisfied with. So we've got 99% satisfied with the Elizabeth River Ferry, 98% for both the Children's Museum and the Fire Protection Services, 97% with the Intellis Pavilion, also with Virginia Sports Hall of Fame, and City Parks, and Sheriff's Office Services. Still in the 90s, we have...
One question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before going too far, I noticed on the survey that you had before, did you have any indications as to which sections of the cities gave you the particular responses that you have to the slide that you had before that?
Yes, we can run that by zip code.
Okay. I think that's good information for the citizens to have, and the council to be cognizant of how the sections of the city feel.
Okay.
And look out to those services.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome. So the next set of, all of these services again are in the 90s, which is just terrific. Your libraries and golf courses at 96% satisfied, Portsmouth Police, 95%, as well as Willet Hall, 93% for garbage, 92% for other Portsmouth museums, other than the Children's Museum, as well as festivals, concerts, events, and medical services at 90%.
It looks like we picked the right 400, huh?
And these are strong leaders as well. You've got 88% satisfied with the bulk refuse collection, 87 with your recreational programs, 86 with the sewage collection, and both drop-off recycling centers and drinking water are at the 85% satisfaction level.
13% drank.
These are also the rest of the services in your 80% or higher satisfaction levels, your court services, public health, public parking downtown, social service programs, and process for obtaining building and/or inspection permits. And I know this is a lot of data throw at you, so I know we're going through it kind of fast.
Doing good.
We asked the citizens how they wanted to be, receive information about city programs and services. Almost 60%, 58% said the regular postal mail is how we want to receive things, 22% said by email. I think you'll find that that contingent of the 22% are probably your younger residents, more tech savvy. And over half the residents have watched the Portsmouth Channel, 48. A little less, 37% have watched the Public School Channel, 47.
37.
I'm sorry, 37, my apologies. And as Rob mentioned, we asked about the website, and of the residents who have internet access, almost two-thirds have been to the Portsmouth website and are satisfied with it. Almost 90% said they're satisfied with the website.
Very good.
And we read this statement to the residents, "The City of Portsmouth has a variety of ways for me to become involved with my community, such as through City Council meetings, budget forums, quarterly community meetings, to name a few." And 43% said, "Yeah, I agree with that." 37% were kind of neutral, and only 21, less than one quarter of the residents, did not agree with it. So then we asked the question, okay, think for 10 years, and what changes would you like to see? And I think what you're going to find is a lot of concern about more jobs, more businesses coming into the area. A third said that, just that, more businesses, more jobs. 15% said improve the roads, as well as the traffic flow, and improve schools. 11% said renovate downtown, which is also talking about more businesses and jobs. They kind of go hand in hand. And 10% said lower taxes. So the biggest things that came to light, as far as needing improvement, involved the roads. 52% specifically for pothole repair, as well as the condition of streets, and by that we mean paving, ditch-in or storm drain maintenance. 37% said we need more efforts to attract more corporate business. Now, when I push this to the second-level priorities, you can see that there's a big difference between the second-level priorities and what we feel the immediate priorities should be. But I also want to point out that down at 25%, you'd see creating a pro-business environment. So if I flip back to that first side, we had 37 to say efforts to attract more corporate business. When you combine those two, that's 62%. That's almost two-thirds of your sample mentioning job-related efforts. So a little under a third said more efforts to attract more tourism, which again comes back into business. Employment opportunities in city government, appearance of public areas, as in knowing or landscaping. Little under a quarter mentioned mental health, mental retardation, and substance abuse services. 21% said services related to assessing and collecting taxes, fees, and licenses. 21% also said traffic control and Portsmouth Public Schools. So where do we recommend the next steps? Clearly, there's a desire to improve the pothole and the whole road conditions. And again, the business thing just came out in so many different ways that you can see that it's really important to these residents. So whether it's from a corporate business standpoint or a tourism standpoint, it's all about jobs and business. Try to improve the traffic flow, work with the school board to again try to improve the schools. I think you have a real opportunity to keep the residents more informed about what the city is trying to do, and I think that could only help in your efforts. Increasing awareness would naturally increase usage and hopefully lead to even more satisfied residents. And the drop-off recycling centers, while it has a low usage, it has a high satisfaction level. So again, that's an area for improvement and opportunity for the city. And you know, your recreational activities, you might think that everybody knows about them, but they don't. I know you try, but you've got real opportunities with just in general, the recreational programs, with the entertainment at Willet Hall, with the Virginia Sports of Fame, Portsmouth Museums and Intellis. As you remember, they all have high satisfaction levels. So we are done. Tried to keep it in your time, LaVores.
Okay. Very good.
Got a question.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
How's this compare with previous surveys on the, you know, on the trend? Do we have that data?
Well...
That'd be good to know if something was up or down.
Yeah, we have the survey that we did in 2007, that survey is still online and information is there. I think you all looked at that survey in comparison to doing this one, and we find that a lot of things are somewhat steady. However, some of the information relative to potholes and street repairs, that came through real prominent in this survey.
And we added a few things that we didn't have in the 2007 survey.
I guess what I'm getting at is it's always good to see the trend and the different variance, even in three-year increments, realizing that the questions would have to be identical to the...
Right. And we did, the department heads worked along with us to tweak the survey instrument, to make sure that we had updated information, to make sure that everybody was getting out of the survey what they needed for their departments, because of course, the goal here is to conduct the survey, but to use the findings to improve the city and do some things to make us move forward. So we can provide that information for you and give you more information about how it compares to the 2007 survey.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. You going to leave those copies with us?
You are.
All right, very good.
Little present. Thank you all for having us.
Very good, thank you. Well done.
Also, I wanted to mention, members of Council, we also have the city's agency of record here, RNG there in the back. I asked them to come just to make sure that they were, won a prize of information, because some of the things in the survey relative to how citizens want to receive information, we are already currently working on image building, image enhancement, and making sure that they get information about things that are happening in the city. So some of those areas, they are familiar with, and we are already working on some of those things as well.
Very good. Thank you, LaVores.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
As we get to the next item, let me invite Mr. Bob Gardner from SCS Engineers and John Karlock from the PDC. They're going to give us a presentation, an overview of the Regional Solid Waste Management Study for 2018, and introduce some of the points of consensus among the SIPSA member localities, some of the options for strategic planning, solid waste disposal beyond the year 2018, and then discuss some next steps for the SIPSA localities. Mr. Gardner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, we talked about the notable 90 solid waste management, 93% on your survey. What we want to accomplish today are basically three things. We presented back in, I guess it was October, a year ago, I guess it was, the results of our study that we prepared, and we want to give you an update on what has happened since that time. There has been a lot of activity the last couple of months with regards to solid waste in 2018. We also want to present, specific to the city, the options that we see are liable for you going forward, and to hopefully get some consensus. Your staff would like consensus as to how to proceed going forward. As I mentioned, we presented last time in October, the findings of our study, if you recall. It was a fairly detailed study, and lots of numbers, and lots of graphs and figures. And since that time, there have been a number of changes that occurred even before then and since that time, that are important to kind of keep in your mind. The first one is the fact that, as you all know, SIPSA has a new board in terms of its structure and its membership, and that's been important in the overall stabilization of SIPSA. Also, the wheel elevator facility was sold, or SIPSA facility was sold, the wheel elevator, in 2010, and that was significant to stabilize the overall finances of SIPSA. It was a restructuring of SIPSA's services in terms of the things that they do. They really have focused their entire mission on transfer and disposal. They've gotten out of the recycling business, they've gotten out of some other services that they provided, and they've really focused on those two main elements. And as a result, there's been a stabilization of rates, primarily because of the sale of the facility and the stabilization of the debt, reduction of debt, and also in terms of looking at the operations and pruning that operation as to meet the needs that they had. I think importantly, in the last couple of months, the technical committee and the chief administrative officers have been hard at work in a number of meetings to deal specifically with what has to happen between now and 2018 to make any changes that have to be made. And so those committees have been meeting, and what's been interesting is that there have been a series of consensus points that have been reached. During the course of the various meetings that we've had, there have been a number of, I'll call it topic points, where it was kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down as to whether the particular municipality would agree to a specific issue. For example, board membership. How do you think that, should it stay the same, should it be different? How many members there should be? Should the voting occur if SIPSA's to go forward? The issues of fees, the issues of whether SIPSA should have, whether Suffolk should have a host fee, whether you can enter or exit SIPSA, and if so, how you would do that? The conditional use permit for the Suffolk landfill, the transfer stations, who should own them, would that be a deal breaker? Whether there would be new or relocated transfer stations, the disposition of the current assets. For example, if SIPSA were to disappear, what would happen with those assets? And so there are questions about that. And then other issues operationally. And gave every one of the member communities an opportunity to say, yeah, that's a deal breaker, that's something that is, we can live with, or absolutely, we're okay with. And so that's been a very helpful process to go through all those, because the issue of, for example, membership and voting and organization have been very important. And so those were really kind of critical elements. And there have been a number of consensus points that have been reached. The general consensus of the CAOs and of the member communities has been that SIPSA should continue to serve as the regional organization for managing solid waste. One of the nuances of that is the fact that you have some distinct characteristics between the east and western parts of the region. You have the western part is more rural, and the eastern region being more urban. And also where the waste is disposed of currently, because the waste that is currently being collected in the west goes directly to the Waverly landfill. It's considered non-processed, assessable waste, because they have no means of segregating that material out. So it's defined, it doesn't go to the waste energy facility, it goes straight to the landfill. So the general thought is, from the western communities, since our waste is being managed differently, maybe there could be a difference in the way the fees are structured. And we'll talk about it in a second as well. As I mentioned to you during our meeting before, was that the regional landfill, I guess the, one of the end results of our study was, that landfill provides a significant leverage for the member communities. By 2018, you will have already paid for that asset. It won't be filled, so it's, you've paid for it, and if you don't stay in the organization, in terms of it's a loss, it's almost a stranded asset in a sense. So that was an important part, as well as it was the lowest-cost solution fundamentally, if you landfill waste, it's going to be lower cost than anything else. So in terms of, if all else fails, the region has a place where its waste can go and be disposed of in an environmentally sensitive manner. So in terms of the importance of that asset from a leverage perspective, that's real important. Also with regards to the institutional leverage and knowledge that the existing system has, and the people that are there, the transfer stations, the landfills, those are all assets that are in place and have served the community as well, and that is important. The issue of tip fee has always been a contentious one in the region. And why is that? Well, right now, the way that things are currently structured, Suffolk pays nothing, the City of Virginia Beach has a cap rate, and everybody else kind of pays the difference. And so that's been a contentious issue. And I think the general consensus was, well, going forward, no special side deals. You might think that the next bullet is contradictory to that, but it really isn't. They're basically saying, if you do organize SIPSA, I think the only way that the western communities are going to come into the group is if you have this understanding of the difference between the east and the west, and the way waste is managed, and that the tip fees could be uniform for within those specific divisions. That's an issue that obviously has to be worked. The host fee issue was a subject of much discussion during the deliberations, and that there was no consensus yet on what that might be, but there was some discussion on what the fundamental rational basis would be, whether it is based on lost taxes, whether it's based on best use of the property. There's lots of different ways of calculating that, and so Suffolk's working on that rationale. But fundamentally, the consensus was that it should be a cost, and considered as a cost to the entity, as a business expense. Everybody would still pay the same rate, Suffolk would have the same rate that everybody else, but that host fee would just be a part of the business cost. So that's an important element from a consensus perspective. Because the landfill is such an important asset to the region, it was felt that the conditional use permit really has to be nailed down, not just for this cell seven, which is currently under the conditional use permit, but for the entire property that might be developed in the future. Because really, the value of that asset is not just the existing permitted area, but this other land that SIPSA owns that could be developed into a landfill that could be important into the future, and would be important, for example, if the region were to begin disposing all of its waste in that landfill. As you may recall, there is a graph in our report that show you the implications of having to dispose of all that waste in that landfill, and how fast you would consume that airspace. So that was an important consideration. They wanted to get a conditional use permit approved now versus later for the entire property, and to define what those requirements would be. Because the biggest issue before was the issue of ingress and egress to that site. If you've been to the landfill, if you try to come out and hang a left, you're taking your life into your hands. Or if you're coming from the west, coming east, and you try to make a left into the landfill, you're really taking your life into your hands. So that is, from Suffolk's perspective, is a big issue in terms of granting that conditional use permit, and the issue of a flyover type of construction in order to minimize that conflict is being discussed, and how that would ultimately be funded. The transfer station was a topic of much discussion. Everybody basically, even Portsmouth probably could use a transfer station. You currently, from what I understand, have pretty substantial queuing times at the RDF facility on a number of days, that really make it such that your collection is efficient as it could be. That'd be the case. Both Chesapeake and Suffolk and Virginia Beach, they have needs for additional transfer stations. Virginia Beach wants to move their transfer station, Suffolk would like to locate another transfer station, Chesapeake would like to have a new one, it's under capacity. Norfolk may need a new one, Portsmouth may want to consider one as well. And then ultimately, the discussion point is the determined way of funding that. And there are some creative ideas discussed by the CAOs with regards to how that might occur through SIPSA, whether the, for example, the transfer stations would be owned by the respective cities, that would be leased back to SIPSA to operate for a period of time. And the process fee that is a part of the formation of the new SIPSA, that would be the lease payment, so to speak, that SIPSA would make. There have been numbers starting around $5 million per entity in order to fund a transfer station. If you want to do something more, you would then pay for it yourselves. But there's some ideas that we were talking about. The issue of a separate transportation was discussed, in terms of additional issues that need to be studied. What do I mean by the separate transportation cost? Suffolk, distance to go from their transfer station to their RDF facility, or Virginia Beach's distance is different, isn't it? And so the cost of transport is different. And so the idea of being able, can you bifurcate your budget such that you can identify what that is, and maybe for those facilities that are located further away, might have a different transportation fee. No consensus reached at that juncture, but it was a point of discussion. The issue of the host fee and how to define that was further discussed. The basis for funding the transfer stations, that needs to be discussed further and fleshed out. Who would operate and how the transfer stations would operate as well? The timing of those, trying to coordinate the days that things are open and when collection is happening, trying to work that out such that you level out your flow to your transfer station was also... station was also discussed. The issue of other wastes and how those are going to be managed, including out-of-area waste and how that was going to be managed, was also discussed. Let's get into the Portsmouth disposal options that were kind of, as we began to discuss with your staff, as to what those might be. And the option, first option is to continue with SIPSA and as the regional management structure for solid waste. And there are two kind of sub-elements. One of that is the current disposal method, which is the waste energy facility and the landfill. And the second one would be if you landfill only. And if you recall from our study, the second one was the cheapest, and the current disposal method was more expensive because you're adding on to that the process of going through waste energy. The other one is to contract directly with Wheel Obrator. In other words, not being a part of SIPSA and just do a separate deal with Wheel Obrator. Thought it'd be helpful, just in terms of some of the advantages that you might look at with regards to remaining with SIPSA, and I've listed a whole series of ones here. And I think the first one, which is that you've already invested, for example, in the landfill, it'd be a shame to let that asset go, so to speak. SIPSA-controlled landfills provide really a hedge for future disposal costs. So if something were to happen to Wheel Obrator, there has been situations that have happened there before that have shut down that facility for a good period of time. That could happen again, who knows? But in other words, landfill provides a real, a nice hedge against that future disposal cost because it is the least expensive of the options. The issue of fostering regional cooperation with your surrounding communities might be considered by some an advantage. The seamless transfer disposal of waste, that's really kind of actually important to you right now, because when things back up at the RDF facility, where do you go? Well, you go to Norfolk most of the time. You might go to Chesapeake as well. And having that option is really important in order to improve your collection efficiency. Again, access to the transfer stations, access to the landfill, negotiating leverage. It's just like anything else. Why do we shop at Home Depot? Well, they buy in bulk and volume. And likewise, if you're a part of a regional organization, you can buy a little bit bulk in volume. If you're dealing with your volume of waste versus 400,000 tons of waste, that might have some varying. And then ultimately, you currently are participating through the Hampton Roads Plan District Commission, the recycling plan. And so, again, continuing in that regional cooperation might be important. Some of the disadvantages to think about, obviously, if you join any organization, you lose a certain degree of autonomy, and that could have impact in terms of your ability to react to changes in the market as well as changes in technology. Some would say that there might be some additional technologies that you might want to consider if you're a part of SIPSA and not willing to be, look into those, you might feel constrained. So that's a disadvantage. And it will likely require some form of a long-term commitment. And that's always a little bit nervous, whether you're getting married or whether you're doing anything else, making the long-term commitments sometimes cause one pause. And you should think about that, and obviously, your staff are thinking that too as well. The option, A, of going to the Wheel Obrator, if you were just to deal with that, the facility's located in Portsmouth, provides significant tax revenue to the city currently. The other benefit of waste energy is volume reduction. You get basically a 90% volume reduction, 70% weight reduction. That's pretty significant when you think about landfilling and transport of waste. It reduces your reliance on landfills, and some would say that's an important element. It generates renewable energy, steam and electricity. You recover your metals and recyclables from the facility, and it has a very long-term proven record of performance. So it's reliable, and that's really important. I know for the city that you have a reliable disposal. The disadvantage, obviously, is you've got to do a new contract with the city, with Wheel Obrator, if you were to do that, and just like anything else, you've got to do it. And it's completely complicated, and it takes some time to occur. There could be some higher cost in the short term than the landfill-only option. And so that's kind of something to be considerate as well. In terms of the option 1B, which is the landfill only, and we've made some estimates with regards to cost, but there's still, in terms of undetermined, lower costs with regards to landfilling. We've made our estimates, and they're in our report. The other advantage is that you have landfill gas utilization. The landfill does generate energy, believe it or not, through landfill gas.
You went backwards, excuse me.
Oh, I went backwards, I'm sorry.
There you go.
How about that? Thank you. Some of the disadvantages, if you were just to do a landfill only, is you definitely would need probably a transfer station to make this make sense, and so there's capital and operational costs associated with that. It could influence the viability of the waste energy facility and the tax revenue associated with that. That's something to consider. Some would say the landfill is less preferred from an environmental perspective. There are people who argue both sides of that, but nonetheless, something that some consider. And I'll say this, the landfill is a, I'll call it a limited resource. It is fixed. Once you consume it, it's gone. And so when we talk about the benefits of a landfill, you've got to keep that in mind. If you've put everything in the landfill, it's going to fill quicker, and it's going to be gone quicker, and then your options are back to square zero, so to speak. And last, the limits of regional options for the long term is a potential disadvantage. Some of the advantage to consider for contracting directly with Wheel Obrator is that, you know, the costs might be less expensive because you wouldn't be bearing necessarily the overhead associated with SIPSA. And again, you've got to consider the advantages and disadvantages of those. The disadvantage of losing that value of regional cooperation, because again, if you go into Wheel Obrator, you're probably going to have a five, 10-year contract, I don't know. I guess that's to be worked out. You could lose your stake in the SIPSA assets in terms of being able to make use of those facilities at the cost that you would currently enjoy if you were a part of it. And you've got the issue of contingency disposal, that you would have to negotiate as a fallback if something were to happen to the Wheel Obrator facility. Obviously, you could probably contract with Wheel Obrator to deal with that, because they're owned by Waste Management and they have several landfills that they could bring into play as well. And then the issue of competition and long-term stability of rates is something to be considered in the overall long-term disposal options. There's some short-term action items that are kind of being presented to you to consider. One is the decision on regional cooperation. I believe the chief administrative officers and your staff are going to be working together to put together a resolution to that effect. I know that many, all the other city councils are going to be getting those as well in the next month or so. I think Chesapeake is being briefed at the same time today as you are. City of Virginia Beach is already, they're briefing on this subject as well. Continue regional participation, including the involvement of the CAOs and the technical committees to deal with some of the specifics of those issues that I mentioned. And along the way, here's kind of the roadmap that we see that's going to happen over the next three to four, five years. What is it, 2012, almost 2013? So in January 2018 is when the agreements, interlocal agreements expire. So here's the roadmap. 2012, provide the briefings, which we're doing today, and then ultimately attain council or board resolutions regarding member commitment to post 2018 SIPSA. And 2013, draft a memorandum of agreement and obtain legal reviews with regards to those. Ultimately, get ratification of those memorandum of agreements. And then for SIPSA board to submit a comprehensive landfill CUP, which they've already got under contract or getting under contract to make that happen for the landfill. So that's 2013. And 2014, ultimately draft the new use and support agreements for post 2018 SIPSA. And for the municipalities to ratify those use and support agreements, and then commence negotiations with, with regards to the future, leading up to 2018. 2016, finalize the decision on the post 2018 disposal strategy. 2017, ultimately ratify those agreements. And 2018, begin the process of operating the new SIPSA. So that is the going-forward process that has been identified by the technical committee, your CAOs with regards to how to manage waste in 2018.
Question, the life cycle of the existing landfill out in Suffolk, even with the expansion, how many years are we looking at?
Exactly. It could be as low as 2027. It could be as high as, you're in my lifetime, depending on whether it's receiving unprocessed municipal waste or ash, or whether you are able to expand that landfill into what is called cells eight and nine. And it could go, it could go beyond 60, 70-plus years if you're able to expand those areas.
Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Mead.
On the subject of a host fee.
Yes.
Wasn't real clear on that. My understanding now is that it would be borne by the other members, any cost to that. Is that a correct interpretation?
Well, the way, it would be a business expense. Suffolk would be contributing to that payment as well. And the basic concept, it would be a business expense versus, for example, now, like Virginia Beach has a special rate that they pay a cap rate, and that was how they got in, ultimately agreed to come into SIPSA.
Understand.
Suffolk said zero, that's how they were going to have the landfill be located. And instead of doing that process, what was agreed, basically, the consensus of the group was, they would rather have it as a business expense, that everybody understands the basis for that expense, the rational basis, that they will consider that to be a part of the expense that, if you're buying computer paper, so to speak, would be a part of the business expense and figured into the ultimate.
But that expense, that business expense would be borne by the members, of course.
Yes.
And in essence, that expense would be buying down the fee for the host city. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And as of yet, we don't know what that would be.
That's correct. There have been discussions, Suffolk came and made a presentation to the CAOs with respect to how they might like to consider that, and the basic consensus was, let's try again. But it was a good effort. I mean, they're really, they're really thinking it through, and they want to have a rational basis in terms of, so that everybody could, you know, because at the end of the day, everybody's going to have to agree to it, so it needs to be a rational basis that people can say, okay, we understand the fiscal basis for that. And so that's what they're working through.
How about the voting arrangement? Will Portsmouth in the, going forward, have the same voice as Virginia Beach, Chesapeake?
It's a very good question, and John can chip in if he would like. My sense of the general consensus was, there were, are some who would like to have proportional voting, but that they would be willing to agree with the current voting structure if that ultimately is where it came to. And Beach, obviously, being the largest contributor of solid waste, they would like to have a higher degree of control, I suppose.
My point being that if that stays the same, then that goes under disadvantage, because right now, we, you know, obviously, we don't have a voice.
I think the general consensus was that if it has to stay the way it is, it seems to be working okay in terms of everybody having the two members for each community and each member, you know, being able to vote those. So basically, the general feeling was that the current, given the current structure is mandated by legislation, if you want to change it, you've got to go to the governor and get changes in legislation to make it happen. Is that easier than just continuing to cooperate under the current management structure? It's something that they're considering. John, if you have anything else to add?
I think you've said it very well. Change in state law would be a time-consuming, somewhat difficult process right now. And everybody felt that keeping things the way they are makes sense, that there might be some rationale if there was a split of the east and the west division to have the eastern five communities vote on things that were specific only to them, the western three vote only on those things that were specific to them. But that was a decision that has not been finalized at this point.
Vice Mayor?
Landfilling may seem to be the cheapest method, when you have to worry about closure and monitoring. It may not be.
It is. In our analysis, it includes the 30-year post-closure period associated with the landfill as well, and takes that into account, the overall lifecycle costs associated with the option. It still comes out to be the lowest-cost option.
You're there?
Yes.
Mr. Ochsman? I know you're part of the leadership on that board. You got anything you want to add to the discussion?
I guess just to explain briefly the different roles that are being played. The presentation that you have just heard has come from the study group that's been operating for the last several years of the CAOs. It was originally convened by former Norfolk city manager Regina Williams, who showed great foresight in doing that. The board that I sit on governs the day-to-day operations of SIPSA. I guess the only, and this is an excellent presentation, I'm just very, very pleased with the, not only the staff work, but the cooperation between the CAOs that has led to the presentation today. The only caution, cautionary word that I would add is to be very, very careful about selecting things that are advantageous, financially advantageous in the short term, without regard to what the costs are going to be in the long term. SIPSA learned about that the hard way, the old SIPSA. And that has particular importance about the question of whether you simply take unprocessed and unburned waste and drop it off at the landfill, or whether you burn. It may be cheaper in the short term to do the former, but your long-term costs and some of your hidden costs could be astronomical. And, you know, in many ways, you're mortgaging the future of our citizens if you put unprocessed waste rather than burned waste in that landfill. So I would, you know, hope that we all learned a lesson, we've all learned a lesson from the old SIPSA, and that we look to long-term and hidden costs as well as short-term and immediate costs.
One of the other, one of the, I'll note this, the analysis that we did specifically did not include adding commercial waste into the financial analysis. The reason that was, was just the, the reason Mr. Ochsman indicated, was the changes that occurred in the 1990s with regards to some federal law and court cases as to where commercial waste could go. And in the case in the 1990s, it disappeared, so to speak, or leveraged against the SIPSA costs and significant financial issues. And so our analysis looked at it as if you're just managing what's in your house, so to speak. And that was an important consideration.
I think the other part of that, the consensus of the technical committee and the CAOs has been that everybody should pay the same tip fee, public or private, so that we don't get into the situation of cutting, cutting fees for the private sector just to get the waste, because we've got to have that much garbage to run the operation. Is that model going to change going forward, or is that just under discussion?
I think that's the consensus at this point. Obviously, you can't predict what a future board or a future council might decide, but that would be the recommendation coming from the technical committee and the CAOs.
Yes, sir. Just one other brief thing. The city's primary representative on the CAO group, Mr. Chandler, obviously didn't have enough time of the day to be everywhere himself, and he had to delegate some things. His primary representative has been Judy Duffy, and I would just like to publicly recognize Judy right now for the terrific staff work that she has done on this project.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Sir?
The next subject is an item that's on your regular agenda this evening. I want to spend a little time giving you some background on it and some opportunities for discussion. And it is the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Community Base Correction Plan. At its November 2nd meeting and in response to the city's request on August 15th, the regional jail authority met and determined that it would be willing to consider taking additional prisoners from Portsmouth in excess of the current guaranteed amount in order to accommodate the closure of the Portsmouth City Jail and relocation of some 400 inmates in the future. The authority also voted unanimously that completing a community-based corrections plan and planning study in conformance with Virginia DOC guidelines would be the best next step to evaluate current and future housing needs of the member jurisdictions, and also to consider the financial impact of adding Portsmouth's the financial impact of adding Portsmouth City Jail inmates. In order to comply with DOC biennial deadline, the community-based corrections plan must be submitted by January 1 of 2013. The regional jail had already solicited proposals for this study, and the cost of the study will not exceed $81,470. And that amount is the proposed cost from the low bidder, who coincidentally has previously performed this work to the satisfaction of the authority. So if approved, the work can be substantially completed in time for the January 1 deadline. The regional jail finance committee and authority agreed that Portsmouth's interests were the primary need to conduct the community-based corrections plan update at this time, but that there was also a shared benefit for the other member jurisdictions. And therefore, the authority agreed that the other three member jurisdictions would pay for 20%, pending the city of Portsmouth agreeing to pay 80% of the community-based corrections plan. Completing the study at this time does not bind the city to relocating inmates from the city jail to the regional jail. There are several other decision points that will have to be considered before that is done. However, none of those decisions can be made without first evaluating the cost impact of this option. Therefore, not proceeding would have the binding effect of taking the option off the table for potentially a two-year window. There are a few other facts that I would like to put on the table for discussion in this decision. One is just, it is in keeping with your decision to pursue the transfer of city jail inmates, which you made by resolution on August 14 of this year. It's also consistent with your long-term strategy to redevelop the current site of the city jail on the waterfront. We also know that the existing city jail is grandfathered as far as jail construction standards and has only a few years of useful life remaining. And also that rebuilding a new city jail or undertaking any substantial renovation of that existing city jail would be at 100% local cost, and as DOC would not approve the 50% state funding for a local city jail if there is a regional jail available. So I beg your forgiveness in having to request this item on your agenda tonight on short notice, but my recommendation is that you approve proceeding with the community-based corrections plan now in order to maintain it as a viable option for future consideration and decision. The city's 80%, and this is in your agenda item for tonight, the city's 80% would be $65,176, and is on your agenda with appropriation ordinance for fund balance. Alternately, the city manager is authorized by charter to make transfers up to $100,000 from any unencumbered appropriation balance. There are sufficient funds in a contingency line item for this expense. So with your consent to proceed at the regular council meeting, I could authorize a payment from the contingency line instead of fund balance. So there are two alternate ways to pay for it. But getting back to the discussion of, you know, why we're doing this, why we're doing this now, it would be my recommendation that you authorize proceeding with the study tonight. And then I would get back with the regional jail, and then they would direct the consultant to get started on it so that we could have the report before the January 1 deadline.
Let me ask you, Mr. Garfield, what is the significance of the January 1 deadline, and why there may be one or potentially two-year loss in that option if we don't?
As I understand it, traditionally, DOC has entertained community-based correction plans on a biennial basis, consistent with their state budget. And so they have a deadline for January 1 prior to the upcoming biennial budget to consider that.
Okay.
The DOC representative was at the regional jail authority meeting on November 2, and there may be some ability to look at a mid-year submission. But at the very least, that means we're a year out. At the worst, it means we're two years out if we don't make a decision to do this one.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
So are you saying if we don't do this, if we don't fire into this study, they're not going to consider taking prisoners? They won't consider taking prisoners unless we do this?
They can't have all the information to make that decision unless they do the study.
Okay, let me ask you a question again. If we don't appropriate $65,000, whatever dollars it is, are they going to still consider taking our prisoners?
No. They responded to our request with a letter that said, "We find this a doable proposal, but we need to do the study in order to evaluate the financial impact of that." And if I, Dave Simons is here, is the superintendent of the regional jail. I don't want to misrepresent what you said in your letter, but that's how I read the letter back to the city.
That's correct. It's in the state law that the study needs to be done to evaluate.
Dave, let me invite you to come to the table so we can hear the audio.
So you were going to do the study anyway, or not? Are you only doing the study for Portsmouth?
Yes, sir. The other jurisdictions didn't need any more beds than they currently have. Portsmouth was the only one that wanted to know the price for additional beds outside their guaranteed amount. So in that, everybody had enough jail beds, they were willing to commission the study and pay 20% as part of the authority. But what they would really evaluate is what's in the city jail now? Do we have enough bed space to take some of them or all of them? We currently have all of the Portsmouth females, so we know there won't be any more females coming. We need to evaluate the types of inmates. We don't have a booking setup. We don't have a magistrate's office. The consultant would develop what Portsmouth currently has and what the regional jail authority currently has. And that would only give you and the authority the ability to evaluate if it's a good deal. And that's how we can tell you what the exact cost per inmate would be, and not knowing what resources it would take for 400 additional Portsmouth inmates. That's really the tool. And for any city to take more beds than it currently has, all four member jurisdictions' city councils need to vote. So this information would come back to you as a council for you to decide if you want any more beds at the regional jail. And the other three cities would have to agree to it.
Mr. Chair, you done?
With him, I am. My other question is for, comes before Mr. Garfield.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
I'll defer.
Okay. Go ahead.
I understand there's some other jurisdictions that are offered or willing to consider taking out our prisoners. So are you going to bring all this back to us in one package so we can look at it all?
That would have to be the consideration, you know, not just the regional jail is the only option, but are there other ways to basically shop them out to other facilities? There are pros and cons with those as well, but we would bring back a recommendation to look at the regional jail option, as well as locating in other facilities.
Okay, so what's the timeframe? I mean, I know about the study, but with the other jurisdictions?
We've got a little more time with that. I mean, this is one that's sort of a pressing deadline that we have no control over. But, you know, the analysis of where there are other, where there's other capacity in other facilities, and what those costs would be on a per diem basis, what are transportation costs, that's something we'll have to do separately, and we'll present that at the same time that we come to a decision point on the regional jail authority, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, as an option for relocation.
But we will have all that information at one time, so we'll be able to compare all of that.
That's the plan. This is the first step of one part of it.
Understand, understand. Mr. Moody?
No, and I guess my question is to the board decision to make Portsmouth responsible for 80% of the study cost, which is $65,000, because the regional board itself will profit from any transfer of inmates there. So why can't, why can't the board pick up the 100%?
Again, I work for the board. I'll do whatever the board says. There was a lot of discussion as to, back in '03, I think the city manager McCoy at the time came and asked for a regional, for the exact CBCP to be done. And the jail authority did do it, and at the authority's full expense. And Portsmouth never acted on it. And so, in my opinion, nobody else needed additional beds. It was only Portsmouth that wanted some or up to 400 beds or any part of it, and they wanted to know the price. And the only way to get that price is for the study. And to Mr. Chair's point, this study is good for five years, but we've got to get it done by January 1, but it's not binding on you at all. It only lets us bring the prices back to the city for comparison.
So the board's rationale is because we didn't act on the '03 study, that we should pick up 80% of the tab this time?
They didn't say that. They basically said that they would pay for 20%, and they think it needs to be done if Portsmouth would pay for the majority of the study.
So they picked up the cost the first time we requested, and we didn't act on it?
Yes, sir. And the sheriff, one council member, and the city manager are members of our board. So they've got a lot of history of how the four jurisdictions worked together. They felt like that was the price that I had to write the mayor back and let him know what they were willing to do.
Vice Mayor?
I can see us being charged for not using the study before, because you're going to make money in perpetuity if you take the Portsmouth inmates. Not really fair to charge us for that.
And I'm just the messenger, and...
I would say the good solution would be if indeed it ends up being a transfer of inmates, that we reimbursed the $65,000 for the study.
I will say this, Mr. Moody, the, under the state law, if any additional beds needed to be made at the regional jail to accommodate Portsmouth, if we had to, whatever it is, a booking section, a magistrate section, or any additional bunks, this study qualifies the jail authority for 50% state funding, because we're a regional authority. The price of this study is included, and we would receive, and Portsmouth would receive 50% of that funding back if the, if the state reimburses the jail.
So we could recoup that.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Any other questions? Ms. Randall?
I think one of the things, too, was in the presentation, was the fact that Portsmouth wanted to do something with the property downtown, which is flooding, and they needed additional space because they could not have the prisoners there in that area. So it was a lot of things, factors that went in there. I happened to have come on the board, and it was being discussed, but it made sense either to do that, you would have to mule another facility somewhere to place them. And since the regional jail is located within the city of Portsmouth on property that's out in that area, they felt that they could take advantage of it. And that was for the members who were on the board prior to us coming in on that.
I think there should be opportunities for us to be able to recoup that cost, once we get this study and see just how this whole thing shakes out. I think the other cities, from what I've talked with members, have been, and Steve, you were on that board prior to Ms. Randall, have been very cooperative in that whole stake in the investment, the overhead costs, the share for all the cities and all so forth.
That's if you ultimately go to the regional jail. If you go somewhere else, that's $65,000 that you're not going to get back, any portion of it. And so we don't know the answer.
But based on the options we have, I would, I would hope to think that $65,000 would clearly be a wash if it was option A, B, or C. I mean, clearly, we had to cover the cost that we put into the survey, right?
Only if you go into that point of the regional jail. If you decide to go to Western Tidewater, who I understand would transport your prisoners for free, back and forth to jail, you don't need to spend $65,000.
Was there a board vote on the decision?
Yes, sir, there was.
Okay, so that's our discussions.
So our board members voted for this as well?
Yes, sir. It was unanimous.
Unanimous for all the boards.
There were no votes from any city.
All the cities.
And I'll say this, Mr. Chair, the jail authority
All of the cities. And that was prior to going on the board.
Gives a payment lower taxes of about half a million dollars to the city of Portsmouth. We really value everything the city does for us, and we want to be good partners, you know, for our host city.
Got you.
Yeah, we appreciate that. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll clear the record up for it.
Could have found that out.
I think to clear the record up, there were people from the council who were representative on that board prior to Mr. Harriet Take and I going on the board. And these things were already part of the discussion process and had gone through due diligence to get the information out there. I think as we go forth and look at some things here, there's always hindsight. That's the point of a discussion in there, and I'm sure that was what the members on the board had talked about also. So as things come about, and as the member jurisdictions come forth, it might be something that we can still look at. We aren't locked in anything. We're still at discussions.
And that data in the old survey that we've done, it's expired, so you can't really use it.
It's only good for five years.
That's all.
Okay. So this study would be available to you and the authority for the next five years.
Okay. Mr. Whitehurst?
We are guardians of the public tax.
That's right.
We need to ask these questions and come to a consensus here as to what this board wants to do. I still contend that maybe the reason jail should have billed us for not using the data that we asked you to do in the past. But now, you're saying we have to pay 80%. Public will say, for what? Because you're going to make a profit as you hold those prisoners, you're going to get paid for it, so you're making a profit on top of what we're paying.
We all will.
We all will.
All of us will make that profit.
As a government entity, we can't make a profit.
We can't make a profit.
And you, the board members, basically set the rate that we charge, and it's all fully transparent.
It's not called profit.
No.
You're going to make some money over calls.
You were on the board.
You're making something.
City manager.
We have to ask these questions.
Oh, sure, yes, sir.
Mr. Harriet Take was there.
Any other question? Any other question?
He can answer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I have a few short items for Hot Topics. The first is one that I wanted to address, which is an issue that came up at the last council meeting under non-agenda speakers and before that, and it's the issue of the request to put no tolls bumper stickers on city vehicles. First of all, I see the use of city vehicles in this way as an administrative matter, and as your acting city manager, that would be my responsibility to make that decision, whether or not it's appropriate. And I believe that it's not appropriate, because the role of government does not include advocating private interest. The no tolls bumper sticker is a campaign that is a, it's owned, initiated, and funded by private interest. And even though we might unanimously agree with the public policy they're trying to influence, it's, it puts us in a position where we'd have to consider other requests for advocacy for private interest, and we might get some that we don't all agree on in the future. So for that reason, I would not allow the notolls.org bumper stickers on city vehicles.
Mr. Moody?
You know, the great thing about a democracy, you've mentioned that we might get requests for something we don't agree with. Well, if we don't agree with it, we take it on its merit and don't do it.
That's true.
It can be argued, and I think is a good argument, that the no tolls effort is for the public good.
the public good.
Yes.
I don't think you would find many people in the city that feel that having a toll of $1.84 is one way in the public interest. Most people would think that that's a burden to all the public. So I think anything that we could do as a city, because ultimately it's going to hurt our tax base, anything that we could do to sway the tide to either lower the tolls or eliminate a toll is in the public interest. So I just don't, I just don't see where putting a no-toll bumper sticker on a city vehicle other than, you know, fire, police, or EMS vehicle is doing any harm. If somebody comes along at a later time and has something that out and left field, well, we just don't do it.
But would we open ourselves up to some legal ramifications if we don't do it the next time and do it this time, Mr. Attorney?
We need a policy. Take your weight.
Mr. Mayor, the answer is yes. If you allow advocacy of a particular private cause like this by putting stickers on city vehicles, you've created what the courts call a limited public forum. And you must then make that for a public forum available to anyone else who wants to place a message there. You cannot pick and choose and reject the ability of someone else to put stickers on city vehicles because you don't like the message. Once you open the door to putting messages on city vehicles, everyone has a legal right to put them there.
Is that kind of equivalent to, I know the school system had an issue last year where someone wanted to disseminate information in the schools and it was a cause that they all were in favor of, but if they allowed that, then anybody else that wanted to disseminate information in there would now have an opportunity to sue because you allowed this other group. So they rejected it. And I think most of the members of the school board were not in favor of that because they wanted to do it, but they understood the legal ramifications. And is that the point you're stressing here, the legal piece that we may open ourselves up to?
I think to the extent that you have sought legal advice, that is my legal advice. But I would also agree that with what Mr. Godfrey has said, that this is a decision which is properly within the authority of the city manager.
Vice Mayor?
I don't want to challenge your authority, but we already have a case where the Western Freeway has a toll on it that we're paying for the citizens. We advertise it. We make people know that we're paying the tolls out of urban allocation dollars on the Western Freeway. What we didn't do was step up to the plate on this one and do the same thing for this toll. The reason it's so important is because it's not just the downtown, midtown tunnel. Every time you pick up the paper, it's going to be another road, another roadway. We have to find a way of stopping this from happening. That's a public use. So we're telling people right now that we can't do certain things because the Western Freeway has a toll on it. We're paying it for you. Did the right thing then and never did the wrong thing then.
Well, getting back to the bumper stickers, I don't know how many years ago it's been, but I can recall a bumper sticker on city vehicles saying, "School's open, drive carefully." I think all of us have seen those. I don't recall what year it was, but I don't know. Certainly don't want to buck the legal advice if this is going to become a legal issue. But I still think it's for the good of the public. After all, those vehicles are owned by the public.
Also, at the light of the end of the tunnel, we put those on buses and trucks and cars. You did all this stuff.
Okay. Any other discussion?
We speak with forked tongue.
All right. Next item, sir.
Next item, let me invite interim DCM and Public Utilities Director Brian Foster to come to the table. He's going to apprise you of a plan regarding consolidating environmental inspectors. As he's coming, let me also mention at your desk, you have a map there that shows the layout of the proposed expanded City of Suffolk pump station that's adjacent to our reservoir there at Lake Spate. When I was briefing you all, there was a question about this and I just wanted to make sure you had that, if you had any questions regarding the proximity of that pump station to the proposed lake. Brian can address that question if you have that in addition to the inspector's issue that he's going to brief you on.
Okay.
We have, we'll take the second one first as far as the location. It's a replacement. There's already a pump station there and they're just needing to upgrade and make it a little larger. So they'll put a new one right next to the old one or to the current one and then that one will be removed. But if there's a specific question, I'd be happy to try and answer that.
So it doesn't involve transferring more property?
No, it's just a use and it's revocable. I mean, we're just giving them permission to use it. If for some reason we decide in the future we don't want it there anymore, there's a language in there that requires them to remove it with, I think, a year's notice. So and that's, we have a couple of those arrangements with the City of Suffolk. So this is falling right in line with the past practice.
And we're going to be 600 foot away, according to this diagram, away from the lake.
And the force man actually travels the opposite direction. So it travels away from the lake.
Okay. Okay. All right. Another question?
The other issue, I just wanted to just brief you on, make you aware, is that we're going to be consolidating the environmental inspection functions that's currently divided between the Department of Permits and Inspections and then there's also a few in Waste Management. Under the current system, refuse and waste disposal issues are handled by, there's three positions in Waste Management and those folks handle those exclusively, while the permit inspection folks handle all the rest of the issues that may come up, such as weeds and grass and things like that. And so we're going to be consolidating all of those positions within the Department of Permits and Inspections. And the reasons we're doing this, so the benefits that we see, all of our inspectors then will be cross-trained to do all the codes, so there'll be more uniformity throughout the city. So we'll be moving three positions from Waste Management to Permits and Inspections. We're not adding any positions or increasing that. And by combining them, they'll all be trained in all the aspects of the environmental code, so that'll provide increased inspection capability throughout the city without actually adding any resources. So by being in a single department, we'll have more consistency in educating our citizens enforcing those codes. And then it will also allow our inspectors to be more thorough in their areas and be a single point of contact regardless of the type of environmental or zoning enforcement issue that may arise. They'll be able to serve as that contact. So what that'll allow us to do is it'll provide us a higher level of service to our citizens without increasing in cost. So in the long term, it should lead to, you know, improving our neighborhoods and having a cleaner city. So we'll be starting that this week and making that, but there'll be a period of transition as we move those positions over and also we'll have the cross-training. So it'll be a few months before everything is completely in place as we go through that process, but that's what we'll be undertaking and we think it'll be better for the...
What triggered that? I think it's a great idea, especially if there are efficiencies there that we can benefit from, get more service to the end user, but what triggered it?
There's nothing in particular. We've been evaluating that. It's been looked at for some time and evaluated as we've gone through just analyzing sort of our resources and where the needs are. We just came to the conclusion that that would, we think, is the long-term, you know, best interest in terms of having all the functions in one place.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
How many environmental inspectors do we have now, Brian?
I believe 12 in Permits and Inspections. And then there were three in Waste Management, so it'd be a total of 15.
Okay. So actually, we will end up with maybe more people that potentially would be working on the environmental services end.
Exactly.
That's a cool thing.
That's good.
So that's really the reason we're moving in that direction.
Very good. Okay. Yes, sir?
Nothing further.
Is that it? Okay. I think we've got a motion to go into closed session.
Just before you do, are there any city council liaison reports?
Liaison, okay.
You have a motion before you foreclose the meeting?
I move to go into a code meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37118, want to discuss the performance of public officials and appointments by council. The subject matter of the meeting is to discuss performance matters and also appointments that are made by the city council. The purpose of the meeting is to permit confidential discussion of candidates and personnel matters.
Second?
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds? Mr. Heritage?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.